Good evening, and welcome to the March 3, 2014 Lake Forest City Council Committee of the Whole meeting. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Madam Chair Waldak.
Here.
Mayor Schoenhyder.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Pendeleon.
Here.
Alderman Takis absent.
Here.
Alderman Reisenberg.
Here.
Alderman Palmer is absent.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Our first item of business is approval of the minutes of the February 18, 2014 Committee of the Whole meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? I'll ask if there are any changes, corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes. I actually have one correction. I wasn't here, and I would ask that the minutes reflect my absence. Is there then a motion to approve with that one change?
No moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item of business is report on Forest Park. That's going to be presented tonight by Chuck Myers, the Superintendent of Parks and Forestry.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the Committee of the Whole. As you said, I'm here to talk to you about the approval of the demonstration project. Before we get into that, I did want to just give a brief summary of kind of where we've been and where we're headed. So, as you know, it started with the Forest Park Master Plan there in the middle. That was approved by City Council. And then we moved on, and we formed a legal agreement with the Forest Park Project Corporation and the city to carry out the work that was discussed in the master plan. And then, in the last few months, city staff has been reviewing the natural areas management plan, and we have accepted that. City staff has accepted that plan. And then, up in the right corner there, Phase One Site Improvement Plan. That is the work that was begun in last fall, and that was approved by City Council last July. And we'll be talking more about what happened in that phase. We are happy to say that was very successful. We were able to complete a good portion of that work. And then, tonight, we are here for the approval of Phase Two, the demonstration project plan. So that will be on City Council agenda tonight for approval. So, tonight, I've asked that Peter Cherry from the Forest Park Board, he's a treasurer, he is going to be presenting where we've been and where we're headed.
Thank you, Chuck, and good evening, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity to be here. Ralph Chiswala, who's the president of our board, had a transportation problem, and he was to be standing here tonight, but he called me at about 3:00 this afternoon and asked me to stand in. So here I am. I have been rather involved in the project going forward, and particularly in the first phase last fall, so I hope I can do it quick myself pretty well. That was up there. Just to review the bidding with everybody, we've been working on the rehabilitation, the reinvigoration of Forest Park. And this, of course, is what it looks like. The black line you see out here is the extent of our brief. It is the table land area. We are not involved with the ravines. We're not involved with the bluff area. With one exception, these lines that you see here are the view sheds that were cut last spring, or last winter and spring by the city, and also by the generous donations of two arborist firms that work in this area quite frequently. The road has been rebuilt, as we'll talk about in a minute, and our focus in the future is going to be to be putting in the path and amenities and other features of the park. Last fall, we completed, largely completed, the rebuild of the infrastructure that needed to be done. And this involved ripping out the ring road, putting in a new one. Storm sewer had failed. That's been replaced, and electrical system has been done. There were a few pieces that were left undone because Mother Nature didn't cooperate, and there aren't going to be a big deal to do, but it's the first order of business. We need to complete a cobble edge and the associated reinforced lawn along the portion of the ring road. There are some curb sections in the south parking lot that simply didn't get in because Mother Nature didn't allow us to get it done. And similarly the case with the stone terraces at the top of the Belvedere, the steps coming up from the beach, and the drop-off area adjacent to the south parking lot. All in all, it was a rather successful time period. Now we move into the demonstration phase. As Chuck said, there's two parts to it, the hardscape and the landscape. The hardscape piece is going to be quite extensive. It involves the installation of a path around the park. As you may recall, heretofore and years past, people walking there had to walk in the ring road. It's also going to circumvent the park, I mean, circumnavigate the park with the building of a boardwalk through the woods at the south end. The path will connect Lake Road to the Belvedere, as it does today, although it's being rerouted. Benches are going to be put in overlooking the cleared view sheds that I pointed out a moment ago. Lighting on the path that wasn't there today, or in the past, lighting on the path from the south parking lot up to the extension of Spring Lane will be placed in. Picnic tables and other amenities such as bike racks and trash barrels and so on. We then will turn to the landscape phase, which may be the most exciting part, and that will involve the planting of many trees, shrubs, and herbaceous materials. That project, that phase, as you'll see in a moment, will, may get started in the spring of this year, but more likely will spill over into the future for a couple of reasons. This is a project schedule, in fact, it's just a distillation of it. I put it up here not to wage you through the whole thing, but I wanted to convey to you that this project is being very professionally managed. It's hardly being run by the seat of our pants. The team involved with this is, on the hardscape side, is me representing the board. In addition to my treasurship duties, it seems to have fallen to me. It's okay. And I'm doing that together with Augie Ziccarelli, who is our professional advisor on the hardscape side of the project. As it comes to the landscape side of things, Craig Bergman, who is also a member of our board, he will take over the stewardship of that, and Galen Gates, who is recently retired from the Chicago Botanic Garden, will be assisting him on the professional side as well. So, point is, this is, as I said, we are volunteer board, but it's been very well organized, and I'm very well pleased with what's going on so far. So where are we now in this, in the status of the demonstration project? The design documents from our architect, Stephen Simpson Associates, are all complete. They've been submitted to the city and reviewed by the city staff. We're seeking City Council approval, of course, tonight. That's the next big milestone. Generally speaking, the timeline off of the sheet I showed you before, the highlights would be that the bid packages have been distributed to a range of bidders, horticultural as well as landscape, I should say, as well as hardscape. The bids are due back in two weeks, on March 12. We're going to have a few days to review that and then negotiate, with the intention of having contractors selected by the 21st. Then our partner in process, the partner in the process comes in, Mother Nature, and we want to be ready to go whenever we can, but sitting here now would be very unwise for me, in light of what's going on outside now and for the last several months, to tell you exactly when we start. However, Bob Kylie, and in fact, we ourselves, want to make the park ready for use for the residents by this summer. So Memorial Day is the time when we want to be out of there. I can't promise you that everything is going to be done, but we are going to make absolutely every effort to make the park usable, and if not, it may spill over a bit. But we're not going to have bobcats and trucks and things running around there all next summer. This is a summary of our budget, which I know is in your packages, so you probably, I hope you've had the chance to review it. But the headlines here would be, with my highlighter here, the total cost that we're looking at for next spring is going to be $1,300,000. We have cash on hand of $593,000. I'm pleased to announce publicly, that number bounced up by $25,000 today. When I went to the P.O. box, opened it, and there was a donation for $25,000. Pretty nice. Some days, it is nice to go and open your mail. It was a good day, so add 25 to that. And we have a credit facility from a local bank backed up by our pledges for $800,000. And this, of course, assumes that we're not going to get another penny between now and, say, the end of July, which, of course, we will. We've got 25,000, 22 and 1/2 million pennies today. Then, as we look farther in, into the future, I label it here, "Fall 2014 and beyond," this is when the meat, the bulk of the landscape activity comes in out there. In both cases, both the spring and fall, we have other expenses. We have continuing costs with our architect, although that's dwindling. Augie and Galen Gates would like to get paid for their professional services, and there are just other things that come into play. Also, I note, remind everybody that at the bottom here, we would like to leave behind a maintenance fund for the park of $250,000. The fact of the matter is, under Illinois law, Vic may correct me on this, I hope I'm right in saying this, but the 501(c)(3), whatever excess money we have left over at the end of our existence would probably go to the city. It has to go to some sort of a charitable, or some sort of an organization that we've been supporting, so that's a logical place where it would go. And I sure hope it's $250,000. That's it. Chuck and I are happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your time.
Peter, would you like to introduce Bob Kylie over here?
Oh, sorry, Bob.
That's okay. Would you like to introduce some of the special guests in the audience, the rest of your team, so to speak?
Augie's here. Augie Ziccarelli is right there. Augie's also a member of the Plan Commission, and his professional job is a company called Buildcor, and he does construction management. This is just what he does. And I can tell you, he's been invaluable to me. He's probably seen more of me and heard more of me than he would like to, but he's been a great assistance, and we've actually become pretty good friends. We get along pretty well. Galen Gates is back here. Galen? Galen is the, I'm not even sure what your title was at Botanic Garden.
Director of Plant Collections.
Director of Plant Collections at Botanic Gardens. So he and Craig Bergman next to him, who is on our board, will be, as I said, taking over the landscape. And I think between those two, we're in pretty good hands there, too. In fact, with Augie, I can't speak for myself, but with Augie and those two, we're in good hands, and I'm tagging along.
Are there any questions from the committee? For Peter and anyone else? Nope, hearing none. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this issue tonight? Yes, could you please come forward and state your name? I'd ask that you keep your comments.
I left off Cliff Miller. Cliff is here as well. I apologize, Cliff. Cliff has been on the board. He went off to work with Stimson for a while, but he's been invaluable as well, so that's the group.
I'd ask that members of the public who wish to speak tonight keep their comments to five minutes, please.
Thank you. My name is Rami Lopat, and I live at 410 East Woodland Road in Lake Forest. You know, I spent Saturday reviewing the natural areas management plan for Forest Park. I was writing up questions and concern based on my experience as a woodland restoration steward, a somewhat sometime consultant, and a 20-year-long career as a garden writer and editor for magazines, including my own. I emailed off my letter to you. I asked that it be put in the record of this meeting, and I hoped it would give you some questions to ask on behalf of the community about the content of the report, but also about how our city staff and our tax money would be deployed to accomplish this needed, but relentless and costly restoration work. I've got to tell you that I was more than frustrated this morning to learn that my suggested edits of this plan will go no place, no time soon, without your intervention tonight. Without your intervention tonight, my comments are dead in the water. Why? Because city staff has already signed off on this plan, and I infer you, the City Council, is expected to agree without asking questions. But I hope you won't. Full disclosure, I was assured that, quote, "City staff will evaluate my suggestions as they maintain, enhance, and act as responsible stewards for Forest Park once Phase Two has been completed by the Forest Park Project Board and turned over to the city." That's a long wait, especially when this plan is written to direct work to take place, I assume, in the near future. You'll have to forgive me for being sort of angry about this shutdown. I have been told, "Trust us," or wait, too many times since 2010. I have a long list of ver instances. We can talk about them all, but I hope you'll just trust me. Let's just fast forward to 2013. When I asked about the natural areas management plan, when I asked when it would be done, it took months just to get a schedule. Guess what? It said to wait some more, that the plan would be ready for public review in November. November came and went. Once again, I was told to wait, so I did. I didn't say a word all winter. Then, on February 10, this year, 2014, I got an email, "Come get the draft Forest Park Natural Areas Management Plan." Eureka! I skimmed it, and I thought, hm, good start. But does it provide meaningful direction for its audience? This is the audience, quote, "Those who are not familiar with natural management or terminology, as well as people out in the field supervising or performing the actual restoration work." In other words, people like me. I'm out there as a steward. Does this plan work as a public guidebook? I needed to read it more closely for that answer. On February 18, a week later, I was told in a meeting of garden club members that city staff had approved the plan. I was taken aback that I wasn't asked for some comments on the plan, I kind of thought it would be, as part of the staff review, but I certainly did not interpret that as a door to public comments being closed altogether. And I'm here tonight hoping you will ask that my comments and those of other well-meaning, interested residents be answered and the report revised accordingly. Now, someone here might want to tell me that the plan does not need to be precise, that I should trust my colleagues who wrote this plan and the city staff who reviewed it. But I'm an editor, and editors check facts. We read closely so that things can't get misinterpreted when they get distributed for public consumption. So here's an example, small example. You probably know that there are shooting stars out in the park. You know what a shooting star is? It's a plant, a beautiful, beautiful plant. But that plant is not in this report's inventory of plants in our park. Conversely, you all know what a jack-in-the-pulpit is. It's all over the ravine, but it's not on the list of recommended plants for the ravine. Now, if you tell me, because I haven't seen it, that the staff caught all 29 of those plant errors, plus the typos, plus the differences of botanical names before they approved the report, I, one of my biggest concerns about the report will disappear, obviously. But if they're still there, think of the consequences. There's some volunteer out there in the park or in a ravine somewhere else, they've got a hold of this report, sees a jack-in-the-pulpit, oops, not recommended, sprays it with Roundup. Could that happen? Yes, it could. Of course, you might know that I'm blocked by virtue of this process from seeing the comments that the city staff sent to the Forest Park Project Board, nor is there a final copy of the report available to me. So, the comments and questions I prepared for tonight are legitimate. My intention tonight, and all along this process, has only been to get the best possible result at the best value for donors and taxpayers alike. I own just as big a piece of Forest Park as any other resident. Therefore, I hope you will find a way to let my questions and those of other residents about the Forest Park Natural Areas Management Plan be addressed, and the plan edited to be much more user-friendly. Take a month or so, clean it up, make it a document which is worthy of the professionals' names who are on the cover, and our own city as a community which goes the extra mile for the environment. I hope you will direct the staff to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other member of the public who wishes to speak on this issue tonight? Hearing none. Any further questions or comments from City Council or staff? Nope, hearing none. This is, was just for information purposes only. I know it is on our agenda at our City Council meeting. So with that, I will move to the next item, which is the Water Systems Report. That's going to be presented by Michael Thomas, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Honorable Mayor, members of the Committee of the Whole. This evening's staff wanted to present a quick overview of our Water System Report and some things that we're going to be looking to do and study during FY15. First, as you all know, the water rates that City Council passed, this is a quick, simple review of them that will be put into place as of May 1. We also will have our Finance Department and Senior Center do a review, a means test, per se, for those households needing some relief. And that, again, will be put together and proposed and provided to you at the beginning of the fiscal year. Systems, sprinkler systems, irrigation systems. We met with two local irrigation companies and one landscape company to develop some thoughts and ideas. We're going to put some more of that information together and bring a plan back to you during FY15. We'll bring a resolution enforcing the even-odd watering restrictions at your April 17 meeting. We, at that point, then, will distribute information to all the residents on our watering restrictions. We'll investigate the possibility of allowing residential wells for acres, for, excuse me, properties that are five acres or larger in town. Currently, our code says that no water wells for irrigation purposes are allowed on any residential parcels. So therefore, the golf courses and West Campus and some of the businesses out on Field Drive have water wells, but the code specifically prohibits them on parcels, on residential parcels. We're going to investigate the possibility of potentially allowing those on some of the larger parcels in towns. And then, we will also look into, should the city have a policy on the number of future irrigation systems? Which leads to our map. Somewhat difficult to see, but this is from our Community Development Department. 1,486 total irrigation systems that have testable backflow devices, meaning that those backflow devices are tested every year, the results are provided to our Community Development Department. So that is a very good number of how many irrigation systems we have. I think it's, Kathy and I probably believe it's few higher than that. There are some that probably do not, are not recorded with us, but that gives a good sense of the 7,000 water customers, approximately 1,500 of them have irrigation systems. Some initiatives that we're looking at in FY15 to develop an incentive program to upgrade to electric control modules and replace rain sensors and/or require upgrades before a home transfers the ownership. An idea that one of the irrigation companies brought up to us was to say, rain sensors are very cheap and inexpensive, but they should be replaced every couple of years, and many residents don't understand that, don't know that. As well as an idea of possibly getting these irrigation companies in when a home is sold to bring them into the new homeowner and show them how the system works. Because as they told us in our meeting, the systems are pretty straightforward, and they can be easily managed by the homeowner. So it's something that we want to look into further, but as they told us, the electrical modules are all programmable, they all will handle even and odd, but they need to have an electric module, which most in the town thankfully are, but there's still some that need to be upgraded. We'll investigate what other state and city irrigation policies are and bring some ideas back to City Council for your review. We'll develop some alternatives to the even-odd sprinkling restrictions. Again, those are restrictions that are put on us or given to us by the state's Department of Natural Resources, but there's many different ways to skin a cap. And maybe we look at some of the system where we allow residents to irrigate one day, the following day we do not, where we are allowed then to build up our reserves, the next day you are. Some of these things we have to look at hydraulically. There was one idea of allowing part of the town to water one day, part of the town to water the other day. Again, hydraulic, hydraulically, we need to investigate and see if that will work in our, in our system. Working with Chuck and the Parks and Forestry staff, develop a native planting educational program for the residents. I know there's a native tree planting brochure material that they have handed out, and we'll look at trying to disperse that more, as well as create an email database for the irrigation system owners. So when we have watering alerts, if we have a need to ask residents to pull back on watering, we can access those specific households very quickly. Right now, as you remember, we will do a reverse 911, and everybody gets a phone call whether you have an irrigation system or not. Finally, as far as capital improvements, we will be pursuing our water plant report, our comprehensive water plant study. The water plant will be 10 years old as of April 24. So this is really a study for us to make sure we are running and operating the plant as efficiently as possible to look at future capital improvements. And then also, as Alderman Edelman and some of the other Aldermen mentioned, identify alternative membrane filter suppliers. We will be looking into that further. The one caveat, and one point I do want to make, make sure it's known to everyone, is that the membrane filters that we use, yes, we are tied to, but that goes for any company we sign up with. So if, in the future, we decide to modify our system and use a different membrane manufacturer, these systems are not interchangeable. Once you lock in with a company, you're with that company until you change around your whole filtering system. So we'll investigate that to see if there are filters that are more accessible to us that are possibly produced here in the U.S. that don't require transport from France. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments for Mike?
Fill a little time, anyway, because our meeting starts at 7:30. The hue and cry I've always had is, and, you know, be it the six years as Alderman, maybe we should register some of these sprinkler, or the systems that the homeowners have, so we have an effective way of actually dealing with the homeowners to make sure they respect the bans on sprinkling?
Right.
Or a license fee, because, again, we're just increasing the number of systems and burden on the water system. If we can't even identify who the owners specifically are, where are we going?
Correct. With the backflow preventer tests, those are typically performed, they are performed by a licensed plumber, and they're submitted to the city. But you make a very good point. With that, we do not receive updated ownership information, nor an email address or anything of that nature. We simply receive the name and address of the homeowner. But that's one of our ideas, is to try and update that information.
Plausibly, and just throwing an idea out there, again, to fill a little time, where we have certain tests that are attached to the actual transfer of properties, maybe this is another thing that we put in when a property is sold, eventually upgrade data
Correct.
Or to make sure the systems are...
Correct. And that's one of the ideas that we were talking about with the irrigation companies, was they could potentially provide that service at a very nominal fee, a $50 fee, where when we go in and inspect the property, as we do before a home is transferred, we'll inspect it for I&amp;I, stormwater going into the sanitary, and other various inspections that Community Development does. Maybe this gets added to the list. And maybe we make sure that, yes, it's electrical module, control module, and, yes, the rain sensors have been updated or replaced. Most importantly, that the property owner knows about the system, how it works, what things they should do to perform maintenance on it, when it should be on and when it should not be on. So I think those are a lot of good ideas.
Any other questions or comments for Mike? Is there any member of the public who would like to speak or has a question as to this issue? Hearing none. We'll move on to the next item of the, on the agenda, which is other matters. Does any member of the committee have another matter that they would wish to discuss tonight? Hearing none.
As long as I have Mike up there, again, to fill time. How are we doing with salt? Have we gotten all the shipments, or...
We have. We actually received our final shipment today. So the 500 tons, we received 493 tons from Texas, and we have heard that all the salt mines are running 24 hours, seven days a week. So the challenge is going to be that the supplies, the large supplies in Lamont, up in Milwaukee, down in Cali-Met, those have all been dissipated, if not totally gone. So it's going to take time to build those supplies back up. Again, a lot of it is carried through the waterways, so we need the ice to break, but we just heard a report for the mine over in Cleveland, that they are, they're running as much as they can and trying to get as much over to both Midwest as well as Northeast. So we have planned accordingly, and we'll be bringing to you at your next City Council meeting approval to purchase our salt for the next winter. We have to commit, we committed to purchasing 500 tons through the county, new county process that they are developing, and then the remaining salt, we will purchase through the state bid. But we'll be bringing you those amounts in a write-up at your next City Council meeting. For the rest of the winter, we're going to be fine. We've got enough salt. fine. We've got enough salt.
And, yeah, just a comment, at least from the reading I do on the salt supplies are a pretty popular article right now. The rate that you found, at least through the company in Minnesota, I mean, it turned out to be a bargain rate compared to what other committees are paying at this point. So, I don't know how you did it, but...
We have our secrets. No, I'm joking. It was truly a search, and myself and Dan and Lou and all of us were searching to try and find salt, not only its availability, but at a, at a halfway decent price. So, it was luck.
You've saved us some money, so that's great.
I have another question about the salt. Well, I know when the supply started to run low, you instituted a different approach to salting the streets and focused on the main streets and the intersections. And, you know, as a result, our, my little street, which is normally clean and dry, about five minutes after the snow stops falling, now has, you know, a very thin layer of snow on it. But I haven't noticed any negative effect from that, and I'm just curious if there's been an increase in collisions or any evidence that we've had negative consequences from pulling back on that methodology. The real reason for my question is, maybe we should reexamine our service levels going forward. And maybe this is the right way to do it. It's more environmentally friendly, but if it's causing people to run into each other on a regular basis, that...
And that's, that is one thing that Alderman Adelman, you had mentioned at our previous meeting, and I think that we want to discuss with the Public Works Committee as we, again, go back and review this past winter and bring that back to the PW Committee for their input. In the end, that's something that the city council, we would like your vote on, because it will, it is a change of service. We are used to salting all the streets, but in the context of this year, long winter, low on salt, a lot of snow, I think a lot of the residents understood and were very patient with us. If we have a regular winter where we receive 30, 40 inches of snow, we can do the same thing. But that's something that we really wanna have a discussion with yourselves to understand if, in fact, we can pull back on the salt usage, that's fine. We're salting, as we said, we salt the mains, Green Bay, Sheridan, Old Elm, Telegraph, Everett, Old Mill. We'll do the mains, and then we will do all hills, onside streets, curves, and we'll do the intersections. But we do those at the very end of the storm. We don't do it during the storm. So, that's allowed us to go from typically about 110 tons per storm, down to about 50. So we're able to cut it in half. So, there's the, there's some savings.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by the committee? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is opportunity for public comment. Does any member of the public have any comment or question for the committee of the whole? Hearing none. Given that it is 7:05, are there any items on the regular agenda that we can address?
I don't know. Kurt, I know you're scheduled to go at 7:30. Would you like to go early?
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I know on the agenda it says I'm gonna focus on the ravine project. I'm actually gonna talk about three things, if you'll let me. First, just a quick refresh on the environmental collaborative, to remind you who we are and what we're focused on. Secondly, talk about our current project, which is the ravine education and outreach program. And then, third, talk a bit about what's next, and what we see our group focusing on as we move into the next fiscal year. To begin with, as a reminder again, the Lake Forest Collaborative for Environmental Leadership consists of five Lake Forest institutions, the city, the college, both of our school districts, and the Open Lands Association. We've been together for about a year and a half now. And our goals are really all about engagement and awareness. In fact, if I may read from our charter, our goals include to promote awareness of environmental concerns, such as water quality, ravine and bluff degradation, invasive species, air quality, tree disease and pests, and reduction of waste; to develop community-wide projects and programs aimed at improving our natural environment and quality of life; and to engage resident volunteers to take action to address environmental issues. Our first year, we focused largely on the topic of water. You may recall, last July, we had a community engagement forum that was pretty well received. We talked about where our water comes from, where does it go? And we like to believe it made an impact in raising awareness across the community of the importance of responsible management of, of Lake Michigan water. This year, we're focused on ravines. And as I mentioned, the, let me just back up a second. The, we had a community engagement forum last fall focused on ravines, also well received. And shortly thereafter, we received a grant from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources to fund this project, which again is called the Ravine Restoration and Outreach Program. The project itself has kind of three categories of activities. There's communication, there's education, and the restoration itself. On the communication front, we intend to develop a whole series of written materials and internet content to help residents better understand the importance of ravines in Lake Forest and how unique they are. We currently have a resident guide to ravine management. We think it needs to be updated a bit to reflect current best practices. This will be intended for residents that actually live on or adjacent to a ravine to help them understand what they can be doing. In addition, we're gonna develop what we're calling ravine-friendly landscaping practices. And this will be directed toward the homeowners, but also the landscapers that do business here in Lake Forest. And lastly, our intent is, at some point, to develop some sort of an informational kiosk as part of the work going on at Forest Park. I neglected to mention that a lot of this restoration work that we're gonna be doing is gonna be focused on Seminary Ravine, which is the ravine that starts at the south end of Forest Park and winds its way up to Lake Forest College. So you may be familiar with the bl- there's a bluff area now. There used to be a picnic table, a little concrete pad. Our envision is to have some sort of an informational kiosk there that helps people understand what the ravine is all about and the restoration work that we have going on underway. On the education front, we currently do field trips. The school districts do. The Open Lands Association conducts field trips largely to McCormick Ravine. Our intent is to expand that, to include more kids, and also to get them involved in the actual hands-on restoration work that we're doing at Seminary Ravine. We're also gonna do a series of classroom visits. Jim Sullivan, who's with the high school, has teed up a whole bunch of classroom visits to grades five through eight, beginning in April. And we're working with him to utilize a watershed model, which looks like a big board game, is probably the best way to describe it. But you actually use real liquids to help kids visualize the impact of stormwater runoff and the impact on the ravines and the lakes. And I saw it today for the first time, and it's actually a pretty nifty little tool. We think that's gonna be a good way to, to help kids get their head around this. I'm gonna ask Chuck to come up and talk briefly about the restoration work that we're doing and how we're teaming with the Forest Park Board.
Good evening again. Yeah, with this grant, we've been working with Cliff Miller on the Forest Park Board as one of the authors of the Natural Areas Management Plan. We wanted to make sure that we were consistent with that from the beginning. So with this grant, we are, we do need to do some match with city and other members of the collaborative. So city staff is going to be doing some buckthorn clearing, things like that, invasive plants that are in the, in the ravine at Seminary. But also, we are arranging volunteer days as well. So we're working with different groups, including Lake Forest Open Lands, their camps. Some of the kids from those camps will be helping actually with fulfilling the natural areas plan for Forest Park. So they will be involved in doing some planting, plug planting on the south end. So, we're also planning volunteer days in, this spring, actually, to do some garlic mustard pulling. That's a huge problem out there. In many of the woodlands around here, it's taking over. If you're not familiar with it, little handy cards that you can look at, these are, these were put together by someone on the collaborative. But it's, it's part of a program to teach people about these invasives. So, we are going to do a challenge this year. We have worked with Lake Forest Open Lands in the past to do these annual garlic mustard pulls at Forest Park and McCormick Ravine. So this year, it, we're part of a challenge. So other communities, other groups, go out, collect garlic mustard, and they bag it up and they weigh it. And I don't know what the winner gets, but it's a great little event. So, we're planning a lot of things like that related to this grant. We're also, as, as we mentioned up here too, it does involve some replanting. So, it's being coordinated with the Forest Park Natural Areas Management Plan. And I think that was all that I had on it.
Thanks, Chuck. I'd like to mention now what we intend to focus on after the ravine work and its energy. This is largely in response to some kind of macro trends that are occurring in the Midwest that are gonna impact our power prices. But we think also is gonna open up some opportunities to help our residents continue to save money. And let me tell you what I'm, what I'm thinking. First of all, let's talk a bit about the rising gas and electricity prices. On the electricity side, there's two things happening. First is the ongoing COMED rate increases. A first one, big one kicked in in January, and we can expect to see similar increases every year for the next several years, related to their infrastructure improvement work that they're doing, including smart meters. Secondly, is the big jump in the PJM capacity price. And I know you talked about that a couple of weeks ago. Everybody's exposed to that. It's not something that's unique to Lake Forest. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you might have about that when I'm finished. On that natural gas side, it's simply a matter of unexpected demand from the frigid cold weather this winter on both heating and natural gas regeneration. And that's resulted in scarcity, which has jacked up the price. We should expect to see high gas prices for the foreseeable future. I just got my February gas bill today. Whoa, I don't know if you've seen yours yet, but they're gonna be high for a while. There's also something unique happening. A year from June, when we have the opportunity to renegotiate with an alternative electric supplier. You may recall that we currently purchase our electric supply from an organization called MC Squared. We offset 100% of the emissions from that supply with REX, so renewable energy credits. And it's been a really good thing for Lake Forest. MC Squared tells us that the residents have saved $4.4 million since the contract inception, which is almost 700 bucks a resident. So it's real money. It's been a really good thing, but we think we can do some more. Lake Forest isn't alone in the, the decision to switch suppliers. Over 750 municipalities in Illinois took that step. And we're at a point now where about 80% of COMED's customer base buys from an alternative supplier. Of those 750 communities, about 190 of them have contracts expiring this year. And about 200, including Lake Forest, have contracts expiring next year. And what that means is, in the next two years, there's gonna be about 400 communities in the marketplace shopping for electricity supply. And unlike last time, where it was really a price game, you may recall that the gap between the COMED default price and what was available in the market was very significant. It was real easy to save money. That gap has diminished significantly. So these alternative suppliers are gonna have to be much more creative in the products and services that they offer in addition to supply to win these contracts. And we think communities can have a big say and a big influence in what those suppliers offer, simply by baking into the request for proposals, specific things you wanna see. And let me give you a couple of examples. There's a concept called power content labeling. And this is simply asking the supplier to disclose the sources of generation that they're providing in our supply. So this would be the percent nuclear, percent coal, percent natural gas, percent renewables, et cetera. A lot of cities are doing this, including the city of Chicago. And Chicago took it one step further, and they said, "We want 0% coal in our supply." And they got it. Their supplier, Integris, is providing them a portfolio of supply that has 0% coal. Secondly, one of the unintended outcomes of our push for renewables in Illinois, and there's a long story behind it that I won't go into now, but the end result is that for communities like Lake Forest that chose to purchase REX to offset the emissions, are really buying these REX from out-of-state projects. In our case, about 98% of the REX, the renewable energy credits that we're buying, are coming from North Dakota wind projects. And the whole intent of the law, when it was written, was to encourage in-state, local development for clean air, local clean air impacts, job creation, et cetera. So there are steps we can take as a municipality to encourage these suppliers to provide local, in-state, in-county, in-town renewable projects as part of the, as part of the package. And that, we would argue, should be part of what we request in the RFP process. Lastly, we think there's a lot more that these suppliers can be doing as it relates to energy efficiency and peak demand reductions, particularly as power prices continue to increase. And this is really all about helping customers use less energy, save more money. There's a lot of programs and technologies available today. There'll be even more once we start to get our smart meters in town. You've probably heard the COMED folks talk about their smart meter deployment. We're currently scheduled to get, to begin to get smart meters in Lake Forest around 2017, and everybody should have one in town by 2018, which would be the tail end of our next supply contract if we sign up for a three-year deal again. So we believe we ought to ask suppliers, as part of this next RFP process, to be creative in the types of energy efficiency demand reduction programs that they offer. So we'll talk a lot more about this. We have time, but I just wanted to kind of give you some thoughts to be thinking about. And we think it's really important, too, that we get some community input on this. So we intend to have another community engagement forum, probably in September timeframe, focused on the broad topic of energy. But then we'll zoom in on this topic of alternative suppliers, what should we ask for, what should the impact be, all that kind of stuff. That's all I had. Questions?
Any comments or questions for Kurt?
You, you touched on the PJM capacity price increase. Could you go into a little more detail about that? I know we talked about it in a sort of general way at the last meeting, but I still, it seems that there's still some lack of understanding.
Sure. I'll do my best to explain it. First of all, PJM is the wholesale market operator, the regional transmission organization, from Philadelphia, Baltimore, all the way to Chicago. So it's a very large wholesale market operator. And they determine what plants are running at any point in time. They set prices for transmission and generation. It's a very, very impactful organization. They sell energy, but they also sell capacity. And capacity is kind of a reservation in future to make sure that there's adequate supply during peak periods. So to incent owners of generation assets to make their units available in the future, they are promised a capacity payment to make sure when it's really hot in August that we've got sufficient supply. Those are the capacity payments that the generators earn. Those capacity prices are set by an auction three years before the date they need it. So the capacity prices that we're paying, we will pay in June of 2014, were set in June of 2011. 2011, we were just coming out of a recession. Environmental Protection Agency regulations were kicking in, and a lot of people thought, oh boy, we're gonna have a whole bunch of coal plants shutting down. A lot of people thought, oh boy, demand's gonna increase. We may have a shortage of capacity. And that drove up capacity prices for three years later, which is today. In reality, there's sufficient capacity across PJM, but the prices were locked in now for the next two years, and then we'll see capacity prices fall again. So, I hope that helps a bit.
Thank you.
Kurt, I had a question. I think when we, we did the original program a couple of years ago, we had, was it eight communities, 10 communities together?
Yeah, eight, I believe.
Given the number of communities that are rolling again in '15, is there any value to getting a bigger group together? You know, the old buy in quantity, get a lower price. Is that a viable alternative as well?
There's mixed opinions on that. I've talked to several of the suppliers on what they prefer and what yields better pricing and more options, et cetera. And they're, they believe that each community is so unique. Lake Forest's load profile is very different than Skokie's load profile, where they have a lot of... is very different than Skokie's load profile, where they have a lot of multifamily homes. And there are arguments both ways, that we could possibly do better on our own if in fact, we have some bundled tools for reducing peak demand, which makes us more attractive to suppliers. So I don't think it's, it's black and white at this point. And I think as we get closer to the time to issue the RFP, we ought to consider possibly going along.
Going the other way?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions for Kurt? No hearing none. Thank you very much, Kurt. Any other items that we can discuss off the regular city council agenda?
We'll be happy to answer any questions anybody might have with any of the omnibus items. I will remind everybody, I think I sent an email out that the ELO Farms item is being tabled this evening. We'll come back to you at the next council meeting.
Anyone have any questions regarding an omnibus item? No, hearing none. I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Is that moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Council will begin on time at 7:30 this evening.